I just want to let you know about the package that prepared for you for tonight's agenda meeting to prep for the meeting of November 12th. Of course, that will be a meeting that will take place on a Tuesday in remembrance of Veterans Day on November 11th. The action items that we propose include permission to send to Westmoreland County a letter to participate in the hazardous mitigation plan that the county is preparing, to consider the ordinance that was advertised, or will be advertised, I guess, related to administrative fees. That was the motion that we passed at the last meeting here in October. A motion to authorize the secretary to advertise for expiring or vacant positions on boards and quarters. So, we'll be doing a list of that and promoting that as well. We're going to be filing again for the Community Development Block Grant for 2014. The city is a nonentitled community and participates under the county's CDVG program and annually needs to ask, make requests. Since 2006, we've received about $600,000 from the Community Development Block Grant program. However, we don't get funded every year. There were some years where we didn't receive any funds. There's also to approve a contract with Barclay for snow removal on parking lots and around the municipal building. This supplements the city's snow removal. And Joe, see if you have any questions on that. Also, we'd like you to consider an ordinance to vacate an alley.
How much is that? For snow removal?
Joe, do you remember what their bid price was for Barclay?
No, no fan, but it's identical to last year.
What was last year?
Mr. General said, "I don't know," but it was identical. I just remember that. I don't remember the number.
If you give me a minute, I should be able to find it, right, Joe? We got it in here's. I think we'd budgeted $15,000. And what they would be giving us is an hourly rate depending on snowfalls.
It's an hourly rate, and depending on what type of equipment you use.
And last year, as you remember, we never, we didn't have a large accumulation. However, we had a lot of nuisance events. They all seemed to come at the same time, which required us to be called out and ice the roads. In fact, we spent quite a bit on the icing material. Last year, within that contract, $18,115 was spent. So, it was a little bit over budget again because of the way...
How much did you say?
$18,115 was the actual bill.
For?
For snow removal. And I believe that's the contracted services line item for snow removal.
Right. Is that on an hourly rate or is that on a fixed?
Hourly, and as well as Joe said, depending on the equipment and the event would dictate what size and what it would be.
You expect to pay $50,000 this year?
$15,000 is what we budgeted last year, and I think we have the same amount this year. Again, snow removal is one of those things that literally every year will fluctuate higher level. Some years we spend more, some years we spend less.
Depending on the amount of snow up there.
Yes, sir. Brilliant. The next question, another question or another. Next issue on the agenda, again, under Public Works, would be for a, I mentioned the alley by Carpenter Specialty Metals. And that's Avenue B. That's a portion of alley where they own all three sides of the alley. And so, they would be looking for us to vacate. They're the only property owner affected, and therefore, you know, I think we have everything in order to do that. And then also, there will be an ordinance for the new fee schedule for the residential commercial solid waste and residential recycling services that will begin January 1st, 2014, with rates being effective through December 31st, 2018.
When is the beginning?
January 1st. Included in my memo, police mind attached, two handouts related to recycling and a new garbage contract, a draft budget. This fulfills my obligation to have to counsel report by November 1st related to the 2014 budget. I anticipate a number of meetings with council to continue to go line by line through the budget and meet with department heads to determine the best way to handle the 2014 budget. If all goes well, after December meeting, we'll be able to adopt the budget. Lastly, included in my report is my actual management report dated October 28th.
Alex, oh, we're not on.
Correct.
Again, on the snow removal. Last year was light snow, I presume, and spent $18,115. I'm just wondering if you shouldn't have at least that amount in for this year.
You're correct. It was light in it as it relates to accumulation. However, the, there was a lot of nuisance events, a lot of icing that did not result in high accumulation, and they resulted in a lot of salt. Not a lot of plowing, but a lot of salting. Joe, you might want to comment more if you have specifics.
I'm just wondering.
You might be able to testify in how you guys handle the county parks. There's just a lot of nuisance events.
I'm just asking whether not 18 or 15 is a fair figure to have.
That's what I budgeted last year. I don't have the number in front of me of what I budgeted this year, but I believe, Joe, we're probably pretty much the same. Yeah. I think we did the same for the icing materials as well, because again, we spent a little more than we had planned. But then again, the previous year or two, we spent a little less than we had planned. And again, you know, try to find that middle ground.
You don't know what we budgeted for this year?
I believe it's $15,000 as well, just like we did again for this year.
They're predicting heavy snowfall this year too, though.
I believe that's what the farmers are...
Well, you know, the weather department, bad winter this year. El Nino effect or whatever it is called.
And again, as we go through the budget process, it certainly councils, you know, will to, if they choose to raise those amounts, you know, we can certainly entertain that. Madam Mayor and Council, if you would, I'd like to just spend a couple of minutes reviewing the letter and the memo that will go to every resident in the city. May I do that, please?
Let me ask a question on the budget first. Just to lighten it a little bit, do you have any intentions of doing anything with the fire department? I'm going to ask that question, why?
No, not at all. In fact, leave the current fire department budget, we'll see about a 4.5% increase under the proposed budget. If you look under the report that I prepared for you, I've broken down a summary of expenses. And so, all the way on page 20, the proposed table, fire department, 4.7% increase. The overall budget is about a 3.5. So, they're above the overall. Just a footnote on the budget, 55% of the budget is driven by SaaS salaries, SaaS salaries and benefits, 55%. In total, those are increasing nearly 3% driven by benefit packages that are increasing by 7.7% and contracts that are driven, 2.5% for the FOP and 2% for the ASME unions. So, those contracted amounts help push the 55% of the budget, which helps push the entire budget in the trajectory of a bit more. So, that's just a kind of footnote, but there's a lot more to it in the budget than just that.
And I know, I know he cut his budget last year by like $16,000, so a 3% increase, it's not really that much going up for him.
Last year, we had budgeted, you're right, it's not a lot, $214,000, and it's about $232 this year. In relation, I know Mr. Baldwin and others could testify that that amount of money is probably, I don't know, a tenth of what it would cost if we had a full-time paid fire department. So, volunteers who staff the fire department here in the city, you know, I don't know what they raise, but they're saving the city about a million dollars. All of those poop drives, all those hoagies, all those bingos, all those ticket gun bashes, all of those add up to probably about a million dollars of savings, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, how it would fall. But that is if the city were to assume some sort of full-time staff related to fire. Yeah, it's really one of the best bargains we have in the budget.
And last year, I think we spoke about the fire chief's salary, and I think it just paid, what, $4,800?
I'm recommending a 2% increase across the board for all non-union employees except myself, who are not covered under a contract. The police chief has his own contract, but the others who don't have a contract, including myself, which expires in December, they have 2% for myself. There's no salary increase.
So, fire chief can get $96?
It does not add up to much. I believe it does get him close to $5,000, but it isn't. It's like $4,900.
And you had said something about getting him a cell?
He has now a cellphone, which is now paid for by the city. It is what you would call a smartphone, which includes email functions and unlimited texting. So, he's able to get city emails as well as texting services through that. For those of you who don't know, the city also, the firemen take advantage of an app that they all use for their smartphones that enables them to get calls on their phones. That's at no cost to any of us, but I just wanted to let you know, it's kind of a neat feature, the technology enables them to get that app and they know what kind of, you know, calls there are. Any other questions related to budget?
Maybe, maybe you and Lane and some of the other firemen and women out there can put the whole rumor mill to rest that there's never been any discussion about doing anything negative with the fire departments. We recognize what a service they do and the volunteers do to the city. And as Alex says, it is the big, it is the best bank for the bucks that we have. So, I don't know where this whole thing started, but there's never been a discussion amongst us to do anything with the fire departments. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know what I mean? So...
I wanted to look at you one more time.
Next thing I said, I'll tell those guys that. They all know that, and I've talked to them. You just have to watch what you say when you're out around public. You go up to a Snoko gas station, you shake your mouth off, and it gets back. You know, half the people in town are related to each other, and it gets back, and these firemen know who it is, and they beat up on people all the time.
Well, I guess that's duly noted. In addition to the NSA and the German Chancellor's, cellphones be where you might in the Sunoco be recorded what you say. Thank you. With that, I want to spend a few minutes describing again what you'll receive in the mail. As the council knows, since September, there was a new five-year agreement approved for solid waste, residential recycling, and commercial solid waste. And what you're going to get is a letter from the city, basically a two-page letter that describes the program, and a flyer. The flyer is really important because the flyer has a tear-off part that relates to an optional 95-gallon tote. The 65- and 95-gallon totes are on display downstairs. This is a smaller version of what a tote would look like. But basically, the 65-gallon will be for recycling. It'll be orange and black, and it will be delivered to every customer, residential customer in this city on or about December 16th. However, you will not be able to use that until January 6th, the first full week of January. You don't need to use it every week. However, you may put in there all manner of things related to single-stream recycling. Single-stream simply means two things. One, it doesn't need to be separated or sorted or bundled. Your newspapers, or your paper, or your cardboard, or your glass plastic can all be put in the container together without separating or sorting them. And single-stream also means that there's, it's a wider range of materials that can be recycled. And again, those are detailed here, they'll be detailed not only in the letter, in the handouts, but in the flyer. You do not need to recycle. If you choose to take your 65-gallon container, and it will come near Christmas, and use it to store the wrapping paper you have leftover from Christmas, you may do that. If you choose to use it as a, you know, a bin for your, you know, sports gear, you can do that. However, we really encourage you to recycle. It's good for the environment, and it's also good for the city, because the more tons that the city recycles, it may result in greater grants to the city. And it works like this. Every week, you'll be able to take out with your garbage a recycling container of 65 gallons. Again, it's orange and black, all the materials in there. If you don't feel like you have enough in there, or if the weather is bad and you can't drag it out that week, leave it for the next week and add more recyclables to it and drag it out as it's convenient for you. You may only recycle once a month. Again, it will be available to you every week, however, you may do it as often as your family needs. The 95-gallon option is specific to trash. This will enable residents who feel that they generate a lot of trash and/or they do not want to buy the garbage stickers to pay more than the base over a quarter period to go ahead and get, it'll be about $60 a quarter for them to get the base rate, which allows them to do garbage and then get the 95-gallon container. If they don't get the 95-gallon container, it'll be about $45. It will be $45. When I say a pound, it's because you'll have to buy stickers at that point. Some people literally throw less than one bag a week out. They're really good at recycling, they'll be able to recycle a lot more, and they may find they don't need to use many stickers at all. They might need one sticker a month. So, they'll have $45 plus whatever stickers they purchase. For those customers who choose to purchase the 95-gallon container and find that there's a week, for example, that they have a party and they generate more waste, they'll be able to attach a sticker to the outages. So, you can go to the Shop and Save, buy a sticker. If you can't fit it all in that 95-gallon container, you'll be able to do that. For the most part, really nothing else changes. You know, we have the same kind of bulky pickup setup, leaf pickup in the fall and so forth, Christmas tree pickup, et cetera. However, at the city transfer station, you'll be able to do the single-stream recycling as well. We have a cardboard compactor up there now, but you'll be able to recycle newspapers, office papers, and the like. And so, that is not only available to city residents for free, but it's for free available to township residents and anyone else in Westmoreland County. However, we do like if you drive over the scales and dump trash or rubbish or whatever you got, if you can clean out a closet, because that's where we can make some money. Just so you understand, recycling at the transfer station is a part of our DEP permit. So, it's something we're required to offer. What's changing is the expansion to single-stream, to newspapers and other kinds of materials. So, we're looking forward to, quite frankly, a lot more volume at the transfer station as well as through the city. One additional thing, and then I'll answer questions. Commercial customers will be able to get a 65-gallon container as well for recycling. Some mom-and-pop businesses may find that's a good way to go. They can again recycle their shredded paper, or newspaper, or plastics, as well as a good environmental thing to do. But that will be for fee, that won't be for free, as it is for residential. And please know, I mean, you're paying for the recycling as a part of the garbage contract. So, when I say for free, it's embedded into the cost. The benefit to you is that you get to do more and maybe reduce your waste stream, which would either reduce the amount of stickers you have to purchase, or you might not have to purchase that 95-gallon container if you're a big waste generator. Council, you have any questions about how this will roll out? Again, these will go out real short. Yes, sir.
Is the lid just going to be orange and the body black, or is the body...
Well, I'm really glad you asked that question. There's still time to change that one, if you like, Richard.
What's that?
The way we, I said, there's still time to change that, if you like, Richard. The way we've envisioned it is that this is the color of the 95-gallon tote. However, the 65-gallon recycling tote will have the City of Latrobe logo on it in the same spot where you see the Republic logo here. The way we have expected currently is orange and black.
Oh, orange bottom, black lid.
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you said that, because I've had a couple people say something similar to me. So, they're, so, you know, if it's related to council...
I mean, aesthetically, I think that's a lot of orange around. About $3,000.
Why? My house is orange.
You don't sound like that's orange, Richard.
I wouldn't know if the 95 is going to be called the Richard Jim container.
I guarantee you, I'm not going to get one. You can write that down.
I think orange top is better.
Black, orange.
That's all I, I would...
What advantage is orange? It will stand out at night if it's seen the lights coming out.
Really? He's putting her garbage out at night.
Everyone's supposed to.
I do.
That's not how you're supposed to put it out.
I, I really don't care. What, what do you guys think? Anybody have a preference?
I think you ordered bottom. It like, it'll stand out in the dark and early morning. I think there's going to be a problem when people hit them and knock them over and...
Oh, if they're black.
And even if they're not, I think there's going to be a problem.
I don't. I really don't. You have an orange top. I don't, I don't know one, one container that's been struck by a car in the last 15 years.
We don't have any containers.
The recycling yard ain't going to have one.
I'm glad you mentioned the old recycling containers. We will be recycling the old recycling containers. If you bring your old recycling container, you can keep it. It's yours to keep. Again, you can use it for storage on the house. You can use it as an intermediary between your house and your recycle bin out on the curb or on the side of your house. But you may also take that out. What we're going to do is, we've worked out with our hauler to be able to take all of those kind of in a batch or two and take them to a recycling plant and have it shredded.
Where would you put the old recyclable?
We would like them to take those directly to the transfer station.
To the people.
Yes, sir.
They can't leave those along the curb with a sticker on it?
No, the trucks aren't set up to recycle those, and they become quite a problem, and to put city manpower to go around to the 3,000 houses.
City manpower and property owners.
I understand. That was something we had not expected, Richard, so it's quite a bonus for us to be able to say, "Hey, you can go ahead and recycle those," because those wouldn't be recycled under normal circumstances. And so, we're glad to be able to...
They're not recyclable.
We would not normally be taking those like that. We would not be encouraging residents to come to the transfer station and do away with their...
They're recyclable, but they're not recyclable by the gas, by the garbage company picking them up.
I'm sure they'll be able to figure out a way to use them, and I'm not sure what they say on the bottom. You know, what we're saying to customers, if you have one as old as 10 or 20 years old, and you want to be able to get rid of it, there's a way to do that.
How about sawing it up, putting it in a recyclable container?
If you would like to shred it, you may go ahead and do that and put a recycle container in, and they'll take it. Yes, Joe?
As far as storage of the containers, recycling bins, is that, is there a limitation of where they're stored? They're stored in the front of homes, rear of homes? The ordinance doesn't cover anything?
That's correct. As we have it now, I don't believe anything in our city code dictates how that will be stored. And depending on the lot size and configuration, some people don't have good side yards. It may end up on their front porch, it may end up very near, near the curb. And again, it's going to take a lot of them short to get used to aesthetically, as some people grapple with that in the looks of it. I haven't heard yet from council, or I haven't heard from the public yet, any inclination to require they be stored, you know, not necessarily...
At some point in time, will it become a hazard? Mr. Kelly, I put a, if may, in terms of the liability that's created by the container itself, if it's in the street, if it's on the sidewalk, it's a pretty large container. Is there, is there any type of liability that would be increased due to the fact that these containers are left out, blown by the wind, into traffic areas? A lot of people leave those things out, go to work during the day, in the evenings they come home, and they may be down the street.
And that's happened to my little containers, too.
Yeah, it happens.
No, I'm just asking the question based on...
That's happened. I mean, they've gotten them...
That's why orange is critical, too. If you're putting it out at night, you can see the orange more so than the black for a liability for the property owner.
Mr. Kelly, so if it ends up on the street, say, there's a windy day, you go out there, that causes an accident, who's liable for it?
Well, I think first and foremost, the property owner that leaves it out there all day. Obviously, you have a window, you take it out. At night, you should be putting it back in in the morning after the truck goes. There's a potential liability for a short. But as Ms. Wolford said, there's potential liability when the little crate gets out in the road and somebody has to...
Well, how many people are home?
You're assuming no one worries.
After they take their trash, people go to work.
You know, people put their names on the containers, but I think the neighbors would probably take it back to them.
You're right. That's, I know that, I know, you're right. I've done it. I picked them up off my street, the little containers.
Sure. Put your name on it.
And we do, I know Public Works and police and other staff will retrieve these things. But, you know, Jim's got a great point. It's like a lot of things, you know, you kind of learn as you go about being a good neighbor, you know, trying to look out for one another. But there's a lot of things we do that I imagine, you know, and this one could be a case where there's a limited liability created for the city, created for the property owner, you know, and potentially, you know, may, may need to be visited someday.
Well, we have way commercial structures right now, like those large containers. I haven't seen anybody sue it. I mean, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but you can't back away and make a formal and not provide anything for sanitation because of the big worry about...
I was looking at those commercial bins that we have. What do we have, about 500 of them? They're all so rusty and misshapen. And is the hauler required to do anything about that, or is he just going to be the ones that are there, going to continue to stay there?
Richard, I'll be happy to work with you on that. I've had a conversation with the hauler about that. If there's some specific ones that need to be pulled, I will let them know that. But in general, unless they don't function, you know, they're leaking, there's stuff coming out of them, they're no longer serviceable by the equipment, we've not gotten into regulating the beauty of garbage cans or the condition or...
No, I'm not talking about the hauler's response.
I understand that, but we have not gotten to regulating that. We've not, we've not taken that on. And so, something may look aesthetically not pleasing, however, it functions well. I'm not, we don't have anything in our requirement that says to the hauler that if it functions well, but it doesn't look good, you got to pull it. But they're, they're willing to work with us. So, if there's specific ones that you have a concern about, please, you know, we can, we can tag them and let them out.
Yeah, excuse me. Can we not do some sort of ordinance so that those do not appear on people's front porches in front of their house, on their side, their back? I mean, they're just, I mean, that's how maybe too much of a dictatorship that, geez.
Well, I think it's, there has been, even at the last meeting, we discussed the idea of rental registration and zoning. We've also discussed subsequently to that meeting, property maintenance. We've not adopted the International Building Code standards related to property maintenance. That's the only part, like, we've adopted because the state requires us to do electrical plumbing and others. And we may look at that, and in looking at that, that may be a part of property maintenance. And for example, you know, our friends to the south, no offense to any WBU grads, you know, we may talk about abandoned furniture and couches and other kinds of things that, you know, deemed to be, you know, flammable and other kinds of things that nuisance, if you will, an attractive nuisance for problems. So, you know, the property maintenance code is not, is something we're going to be looking at with those other two areas, the zoning. Property maintenance is where that falls under. It covers everything from, you know, the grass, to how windows are, to shutters, to gutters, everything you can see from the street.
That's for homeowners as well as renters.
Correct, yes. Yeah, property, all, yeah.
Do the bags fit in the 95 about?
It just really depends. I mean, obviously, the size of the bags. You can get contractor bags, you can get little 10-gallon, you know, 13-gallon kitchen bags.
Do they have been, have they been plastic bags?
No. Now, I mean, we, you, the bags inside, you know, can be literally the bags you take out of your car from Wendy's. They're, they're going to be dumping those. Yeah, ideally, every, you know, the garbage man will tell you, "We'd like it to be one nice bag or two really tightly tied bags." But I've got kids, and I could tell you, that's their job, and they don't always tie bags so good. So, sometimes dad looks at it Monday morning and can't believe how strewn about it is. And again, the guys just will take it. It's just what it is. So, we're not saying you have to fill these with bags, but that's the ideal method. It's both good for you because you're going to find it a lot easier to clean, because what will happen if you don't use a bag is that debris will begin to stick on the bottom, and you will find that that won't tip out. And it's not the garbage man's job to clean the bottom of your cart. And what you'll find is a mess. So, prudence will tell you, it's good to use bags and these things and to try to stay on it. If you don't, you run the risk of just that accumulated garbage on the bottom. And again, we're not requiring a contractor to scrape the bottom. They'll, they'll tip it and shake it, but you know how it is. Some things will find themselves glued to the bottom and they'll just make a mess for you.
Especially in the winter.
Bags are highly, yeah.
When the water gets in there and freezes.
Bags are highly recommended. Joe, I really can't tell specifically, I don't, I mean, whether it's like 12, 13-gallon bags. I mean, you could do the math, 95 gallons, depending on how you compact them, you know, you could probably get quite a bit. you compact them, you know, you can probably get quite a bit.
Trying to just figure out if you're saving by getting that or the stickers.
What you save, you may not save outright in cash, but it's the convenience, if you will, of having to go to shop and save and, and maybe do those things. You can cancel it. However, I'm glad you brought that up. Let's say two years from now, or next year, you say, I really like my neighbor's ninety-five gallon cart, I ought to get one. There'll be a delivery fee at that time, but this time it's not. So if you do the tear-off by the date that comes on the sheet, you know, you'll get that delivered to your house in the middle of December. If you choose next year to get one, you're going to have some sort of delivery fee, because we'll have to make some sort of special trip to accommodate that.
What if after, I don't know, a year or six months, you decide, you know what, I don't really need this, will they come and take it back?
Yes, and no fee, you cancel, they can't, and of course, it, it's, it's the property of, of the hauler, because the, the houses can change. A house may be a toter house, if you will. They move, and in comes a sticker house, and, and so that, that really why, you know, is why you want the toter to be on their side, because they, those are actually like the least piece of equipment that will go and come as dependent on customers.
Is that for the sixty-five gallon also?
No, sir. Those are, those are the cities, and those will be ours throughout the contract. However, manufactured defects in items related to normal wear and tear will be repaired at the responsibility of the hauler. You need to contact us or the hauler to let them know that you have a problem with your